For the audio for everyone. So with that, I will turn it over to Congresswoman Custer.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you so much for being with us. Chris and I are super excited to discuss the passage of the bipartisan Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act. It is important that we stay focused on the jobs act aspect of this. There's so much in this bill and today I'm joined by my colleague Representative Chris Pappas from the first district, as well as representatives from across the state. What an incredible turnout from our regional planning commissions to discuss this landmark, once in a generation investment in our nation's infrastructure. So as you all know, the transportation networks are more than just roads, bridges and railroad tracks. They're vital economic engines that drive growth and create jobs in all of our communities. For far too long, we've let our infrastructure fall into a state of disrepair. The American Society of Civil Engineers has given New Hampshire a C minus on its recent infrastructure report card. And as someone who spends countless hours traveling across my district, all the way to Canada, from the Mass border and from the Vermont border, I've seen firsthand how much work our roads and bridges really require. So I was proud to co-sponsor and support the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act because this legislation is truly going to be a game changer for the Granite State and for our entire nation. The bill will bring $1.1 billion to the state. We have to keep track of our millions, billions and trillions, but that's over a billion dollars to fix roads right here in New Hampshire and an additional $225 million to fix our bridges in the Granite State. These dollars are going to make it easier for workers to get to their jobs and get home after work so they can coach and be with their families and live a high quality life right here in New Hampshire. It will help our children get to school and learn and it will help Granite staters connect to family and friends across the state. This legislation takes a historic step toward building passenger rail in the Granite State. The bill contains more than $66 billion for federal rail investment and Chris and I are very excited about getting literally back on track with our plans to use our bill, the Invest in American Railroads Act, to make it easier for New Hampshire to build the Capitol Quarter Project and finally bring passenger rail back from Boston to Nashua, Manchester and all the way to Concord. So this legislation delivers for Granite State businesses by helping them access talented workers in the Boston region and helping them get their goods to market. It supports workers who live in New Hampshire and commute to the Boston area, making their travel more direct and their commutes shorter. In addition to helping us get connected physically, the bipartisan infrastructure package will help Granite staters stay connected virtually. I always say COVID-19 pulled back the curtain on the inequities in our economy and in our infrastructure. So this bill provides $100 million for broadband internet expansion right here in New Hampshire, allowing more Granite staters to work from home, to get their healthcare from home, to get their education from home and to truly thrive in our digital economy and stay in touch with friends and loved ones. Now a particular shout out to an additional $150 million for the Northern Border Regional Commission to support ongoing broadband expansion and economic developments in the North Country. We often said the North Country was left out, but not this bill. This bill will make life in the North Country even better. The bill will make it easier for electric vehicle drivers to come visit New Hampshire and enjoy everything that our great state has to offer. And the bill provides New Hampshire with $17 million over five years to develop our EV charging network across the state so we can welcome guests from all over, including in Quebec where 40% of the vehicles are electric vehicles. This network will make it easier for Granite staters to transition to electric vehicles and experience the benefits of lower fuel and lower maintenance costs. And finally, an issue that's near and dear to my heart, we've been working night and day. This legislation makes important investments in our nation's dam infrastructure. I call it a damn good idea based on my legislation called the 21st Century Dams Act. New Hampshire dams received a C minus from the American Society of Civil Engineers and this bill provides more than $2.4 billion across this country to rehabilitate, retrofit and remove dams, including those in New Hampshire to improve public safety, increase clean power production and enhance the health of our state's rivers. I commend my colleagues for their leadership on this bill. A particular shout out to Senator Shaheen who helped to negotiate the bipartisan infrastructure bill back this summer and to Senator Hassan who worked on the broadband provisions. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to my friend and colleague Congressman Chris Pappas.
Thank you very much, Annie, for your work and for that great overview of the bipartisan infrastructure bill. And good afternoon, everyone. It's really terrific to be with you. I want to say hello to all my friends from the various regional planning commissions around the state. I know we've held a number of sessions over the last few years. Many of those talks were aspirational about potential pieces of legislation that we might be able to get through Congress. It's always been great to hear about your priorities and your views about transportation and infrastructure in New Hampshire. And I know this bill is an important step forward to make sure that we are putting a down payment on the future. I think at this moment in our history, we've got to make sure we're not just rehabilitating the infrastructure that we have, that we're not just managing the systems that exist today, but we're thinking smart about the future. And some of the provisions that Congresswoman Custer outlined from multimodal transportation transit to bike and pedestrian to broadband to water and sewer. These are all provisions that are contained in this bill and I think are going to set New Hampshire up for a really exciting few years as we've got a great opportunity to begin to advance projects and figure out ways that we can fully utilize these dollars. Now, one of the most important aspects of the bill is that it reauthorizes surface transportation. It's a five-year bill, so it's going to provide us that long-range look that we know is so essential. That's one of the points of feedback that I've heard regularly from our planning commissions. And this five-year time period really gives us the opportunity to plan appropriately and begin to figure out ways to advance projects and deploy these dollars effectively here in New Hampshire. We just came from an event with DOT Commissioner Sheehan. I know she and her team are looking very closely at the legislation. I expect that our office will continue to stay in close contact with hers about additional technical clarifications that might be needed and rulemaking that might come after this. So there's certainly more detail that we would like to work with you all on. But I think the good news is that in terms of the formula funding and the buckets of money that the state has been depending on for transportation, those are all going to see a massive increase from roads to bridges to transit. New Hampshire is going to get more than a billion dollars over the next five years. And add on top of that, some of the other really critical programs to making sure that we're creating good paying jobs and moving our economy forward, especially some of the water provisions in the bill, reauthorizing the state revolving funds, increasing the amount of money that can go toward principal forgiveness in those funds is really important as we look at all the needs that exist across our state. So I'm really excited that we're at this moment where we finally pass this bill through the House. We sent it to the President's desk. It will soon be signed into law. And you know, as we move forward, I really hope we can continue to hear the voices of the planning commissions that are really so essential in helping us identify and understand needs that exist around our state. And I always really value your feedback. So why don't we throw it open to the group and have a little bit of a conversation and maybe there's some questions and thoughts from the panel?
Great. Thank you Congressman. And I know, I think Jamin Kara with the National Regional Planning Commission had some words to open things up.
Thank you, Nick. And thank you Congressman Pappas and Congresswoman Custer for your leadership on this. You know, I just really wanted to start off by picking up on a comment the Congressman Pappas made about, you know, when we previously met, you know, with you as Regional Planning Commission Directors, you're right, so much of what we were talking about was so aspirational. And now to see that there's really need in this bill that could help, you know, bring some of these project initiatives to reality is just really exciting. I could talk about so many things, but you know, I thought I would just zoom on a few of the opportunities that are particularly important to our region. Congresswoman Custer mentioned the Capitol Quarter Project and of course Congressman Pappas, as you know it as well, that that's a top priority for our region. And this bill couldn't have come at a better time. Right now, this project is really moved into, it's moved into the project development phase, which means this is real. We're actually going to be getting into preliminary engineering and critically, we're at the point right now of developing the financial plan. So to have an understanding that there's going to be significantly more funding for passenger rail down the pike is critical to developing that financial plan. So we're really, really thrilled to see that. And a couple more things I just wanted to touch on is another one of our critical priorities in this region are safety improvements to New Hampshire 101. I think as we can all appreciate, 101 is, you know, the critical east-west lifeline for us. And we've long ago identified that there are critical safety needs, particularly for the stretch between Wilton and Bedford. And that's underfunded right now by about $10 million in the 10-year plan. So I'm really hopeful. I know one of the strategies certainly that our Commissioner at DOT has is to advance projects in the 10-year plan and for things that are already funded, if they're underfunded, to enhance that. So I'm really optimistic around that. And I also just really encouraged to see funding around EV charging and in particular around school bus electrification. Earlier this year, we kicked off an initiative with the goal of converting the entire school bus fleet in our region to electric vehicles. And that was clearly a very audacious goal, especially at that point, because one of the barriers that we hit, not surprisingly, was the cost differential between a diesel-powered vehicle and an electric vehicle. And that was just something that we couldn't get beyond. Our school districts are overwhelmed. That's not an additional cost or challenge that they can take on. So seeing this in the bill to me was just really, really particularly encouraging. So I'm excited about so many things. I know I'm going to be pouring into a lot of the detail, but I could go on all day, but I won't. You know, I'd be happy to turn the mic over to some of my colleagues.
Thank you, Jay. Appreciate that. And I guess next we'll go to Nate with Southern New Hampshire Planning Commission.
Well, thanks very much, Nick, and thank you to Congressman Pappas and Congresswoman Custer for, again, all of your leadership in helping to make this bill a reality. I would certainly echo what Jay has said. We're digesting this bill as well. There's a lot in here. Every page has something new and exciting that we, you know, we seem to turn and discover something new every time we look at the bill. So we're still digesting a lot of things, but there's, there's a lot of reason for optimism in this bill that, that a lot of the projects we've been working on in our region and around the state will be brought to fruition. And like Jay, we are strong supporters as well of the Capitol Corridor rail development project. We had a meeting just this week with Manchester stakeholders talking about the financial plan for that. We were talking in that meeting about how oversubscribed the Small Starts Program has been nationally. And certainly it appears that some of the investments in this bill may ease some of that oversubscription and put New Hampshire in a better position to make the capital improvements necessary to bring the Capitol Corridor to completion. A couple of things I'll highlight as well, you know, it's not just about new programs. It's about making sure that existing programs that we use in the world of transportation are adaptable to the emerging needs that we have. There are a lot of significant program changes to some of the existing programs in this bill. The Surface Transportation Block Grant Eligibility, for instance, has been expanded to include electric vehicle charging infrastructure. That's crucial. That's, you know, one of the most important and largest sources of funding for transportation in our state and being able to use and have the eligibility to use that funding to help deploy EV charging infrastructure is going to put us in a position to be ready for that fleet of the future and be preparing for it now. The increase in the Transportation Alternatives Program for, for non-motorized transportation, bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure projects continue to be very popular, very oversubscribed around New Hampshire. The increase in funding in that program is going to be welcome for our communities. And then one thing that's, that I believe is in this bill as well is, is the toll credit marketplace. It's a little bit of like a, you know, a bit of a complex issue, but that, that has the potential to allow New Hampshire to monetize the credits that, that our state earns from investments in the turnpike system and could really be a game changer for our state. It's exciting to see that toll credit marketplace legislation included in this bill. And I think for all those reasons and more, there's a lot of reason for optimism within our region. And thank you again, and I will yield the floor back to you, Nick, and for whoever of my colleagues may be next.
Thanks so much, Nate. Next, we're going to go to Jennifer with the Stratford Regional Planning Commission.
Good afternoon and thank you all for having us here and an opportunity to talk about some of the priorities in our region. Kind of echo some of what Neat said and Jay said before me. One of the things that is most interesting we find is the the growth of prior programs as well as incorporation of new goals and ideas that we had previously been talking about in those more aspirational terms. For our region, some of the things that we're looking at is the opportunity for some coordination of investments. And during that construction phases in particular, we've got several projects that have been developed using more of a phased approach, looking at a complete streets project in the tri-cities Dover Rochester Summersworth, as well as some congestion mitigation and infrastructure improvements on Route 11 through Rochester, which is really our tourist corridor up to the Lakes region, particularly during those summer months. We're looking at the opportunity to take some of those transportation projects and integrate them with other utility upgrades and infrastructure investments. So the potential to possibly look at concurrent broadband and electric and water sewer infrastructure investments simultaneous with our sidewalks and road improvements. We're also really particularly focused on investments in enhanced economic development and well-being of the region, particularly for our more rural communities. And so looking at the fact that there are some specific provisions in the bill for those rural communities and some potential set-asides there. We have several communities with very active downtown redevelopment and development initiatives. They, in addition to having those economic development programs, also have several bicycle and pedestrian improvements that they have submitted for funding. And the majority of our projects that we had this round in New Hampshire's 10-year plan process were bicycle and pedestrian improvements in community downtown. So really looking to make those enhancements for our communities. And, you know, the other piece of it is, is the ability to add that broadband infrastructure as a critical component of our region's infrastructure. Tied to the downtown redevelopment, one of the things our communities are looking at and trying to make some investments in is that EV infrastructure in particular. They're looking at that as an opportunity to entice people to their downtowns, especially if we can do some installations in those community centers. So that would be a win-win on both the transportation, infrastructure advancements as well as our economic development enhancements. And lastly, I just kind of say the kind of priority wise we have is promoting intermodal transportation. Southeast New Hampshire is one of the truly intermodal regions in New Hampshire. We have not only the regional bus system coast, there is also the down Easter. So looking at making sure we have continued investments in those transportation systems and really, you know, as you were mentioning before about this is not just about transportation and infrastructure, it's also about jobs. You know, one of the number one things we hear when we're talking to the folks that, that run the coast system is the ability to compete for CDL drivers. And so that's really another big component here for us in our region. So with that, I will also yield the floor and thank you again.
Thank you, Jennifer. With that, we will go to Megan with the Upper Valley Lake Sunape Regional Planning Commission.
Nick, thank you everybody for having us and for lending your ear. So as Nick said, I'm representing the Upper Valley Lake Sunape Regional Planning Commission. And as you know, we are home to one of the state's largest employers and we employ many from out-of-state residents. And when we're talking about jobs, there are hundreds of vacancies at our hospital here. So this infrastructure bill is something that we are really looking forward to because part of why we need to fill those jobs is we need to get people to work. So a little bit else of what's going on in our region is with the current 10-year plan funding that we get from the state, it's really difficult in a rural region to even fund half of a project, a priority project 10 years from now. So we've got some projects in our cities that just, you know, stayed dormant for many years and it's, and I'm hoping that this bill will help move those along. And also being one of the, one of the regions that borders Vermont, we have those wonderful Connecticut River Bridges that are just impossible to fund and to fix for the state. And on a positive note, we are really thrilled to see the multimodal addition into this bill and also more funding for public transit. It is really needed in this rural area and it's being utilized and it's really helping with the capacity of our roadway system. Also the lack of EV network and hopefully, you know, we have 89, but we also have a lot of other commonly traveled roadways and I'm really excited to have the EV network coming to the state. And lastly, just to share on the Upper Valley, we're having a strong focus right now on climate in migration to our region. We live in a wonderful place. We have water. We are impacted by climate change, but we are fairly resilient compared to other places in our country. So we are expecting and anticipating an increase in population. So what do we need? Well, more housing, which means we need to upgrade our infrastructure in a resilient way, you know, water sewer, roadways, intermodal transportation, and like what was mentioned earlier, broadband. We have two of the bottom three towns in our region for broadband services. And we can't get people to move here if they can't get on the internet. So that, that is it for me. And again, thank you and back to you, Nick.
Great. Thank you, Megan. With that, we will go to Dave with the Rockingham Regional Planning Commission.
All right. Thanks, Nick. Thanks also to our congressional delegation for their leadership and getting this bill through and with all the provisions that it does have. I'll be very brief. I think the thing that we're, we're looking forward to this the most would be related to the climate change provisions as a coastal region. Climate change and sea level rise are sort of the preeminent topic that we're dealing with at this moment. And we're spending a lot of resources sort of identifying where things are likely to be impacted. Most recently, looking at the transportation network and, and what sea level rise will, impacts will be on the transportation network as a whole, as well as in particular locations. And being able to maybe take some more steps forward to that and, and figure out what the the engineering, you know, design will be for each of those sites and then get them built and in place so that we can maintain access to our seacoast in the future. It's probably our highest priority at this point. So with that, I'll say thanks again. Thanks for having us this afternoon.
Great. Thanks, Dave. With that, we're going to go to Susan with Lakes Region Planning Commission.
Yes. Hi, thank you. I'm Susan Slack. I'm the principal planner here at the Lakes Region Planning Commission and sitting in for our executive director, Jeff Hayes, who had to be away at a, at another commitment this afternoon. But as you can imagine, here in the Lakes region, water quality is the key. And so we're excited about potential funding for water and sewer projects, stormwater infrastructure projects. Bristol, one of our communities, has some good plans for expansion of a sewer system as well as fiber optics. Several other communities are looking at some of those same type of projects. And access to dependable broadband is just so desperately needed. You know, the pandemic showed us with so many students at home and employees at home, how we rely on broadband and where the gaps are. And we have topography that is challenging. And in addition to accessibility of broadband affordability in many of our communities is, is a big issue. And then funding for transportation projects. Highways and bridges, of course, are important in our region for our tourism economy and manufacturing economy. But we also are excited about the possibilities of focusing a bit more on transportation alternatives programs, intermodal programs. We had a number of Bike TED proposals that were unable to be funded in the recent TAP funding. Really great projects in Bristol and Belmont and Plymouth and Moltenborough that we were unable to get funding for. These are important projects in our, you know, for our tourism economy, for downtown economic development, for our quality of life, for attracting not only retirees, but younger people who want to live here for quality of life. So these are all important economic drivers. And again, public transportation, we're not a region that has much in the way of fixed bus routes because of our small rural communities, heavily dependent on volunteer driver programs. But this is definitely an area where we could use some more support. But you know, there's so many exciting things to talk about in this bill and potential for the future. And we're very appreciative of both Congresswoman Custer and Congressman Pappas and your efforts. And we look forward to the future. Thanks.
Thank you, Susan. With that, we will go to JB with Southwest Regional Planning Commission.
Thank you, Nick. Hi, everyone. Congressman Pappas and Congresswoman Custer, thank you so much for your support on this bill. I'll be brief here. I mean, one, one thing that I, a point that I wanted to make about New Hampshire is that a lot of our municipalities, the prop, are really struggling with property taxes. And so making the kinds of investments that they want to make in, at the local level, they need help. And you know, if you went to, if you go to one of the 10-year plan gas adherence that are, that are just ended in the state, you'll hear New Hampshire DOT talk about how the federal government has an outs, oversized role in the programming for the 10-year plan. I think if they say 56% of the plan is funded by federal funds and 81% of the highway funds are federal sourced as well. So this is really important in New Hampshire. The local, at the local level, we don't have a lot of capacity to invest in, in the transportation at the state level. There's, I would say maybe unwillingness to get serious about developing revenue sources to meet our needs. And so this federal resource is so, so important. And it's, I'm really excited about the new opportunities in the bill. Up until now, most of us have had to focus on safety and maintenance. Now we can start talking more about modernization of the system, improving quality of life, thinking about economic development opportunities with transportation and other investments. And this is going to just be a huge boon to the southwest part of the state. Not only the transportation investments, but broadband investments as well. So thank you very much.
Great. Thank you, JB. With that, we'll go to Dean with Central New Hampshire Regional Planning Commission.
Hey, thanks for having us. I guess there's probably not a whole lot that I can say other than echo a couple, a couple of things that everyone else has already said, but I mean, obviously, this is, it's also just great to have, like what Jay said, this is a slightly different conversation than a few of the last times we've gotten together and talked with our congressional delegation. So that's great. Obviously, the, the increase in investments is going to be huge and we're looking forward to that. I wouldn't even get into the projects, but another thing that in our region, there another thing that in our region that they're, they'll be happy to see is just the investment in the broadband. That's really, uh, something that we hear a lot about in the rural parts of our region. Um, another thing is, um, it's then in addition to just upgrading some of the water and sewer, but also the extensions and of water and sewer that tie into the economic development that we hear about in some of our communities as well. Um, those are things that will, they'll be happy to hear and will look forward to working with. Um, uh, other than that, I think I'll just, I'll end it with that, with that for me.
Great. Thanks, Dean. Um, and then before we open it to Q and A, we have, uh, Kayla with the North Country Council. And then after that, we go to conversation.
Hi all. Thank you very much for being here. You all, all of your teams and everybody behind the scenes we don't see today who's been fighting really hard for this. Thank you all. Um, I'm not going to repeat all of the wonderful comments that have been made, but say yes to over subscribe programs for transportation and a real desire and a real enthusiasm to see some of those projects come to fruition. Particularly I love and our communities will love that tie between the multimodal, the bike, the pad, the sidewalks, the transit and tying them into us rebuilding that good energy in the downtowns and village centers here. That is huge. And to echo something that I do think is absolutely worth echoing that Jen said in the beginning is that ability to coordinate these projects with water, wastewater, broadband, pulling up the roads and the sidewalks is something that tying the thread between all of these topics is such a beauty in making those projects be more efficient and more effective and not needing to redig and rebuild. When the funding becomes available for the next thing we're looking at. For us up in the North Country, I just want to speak for a second about the electrical vehicles and the charging stations. Um, after doing my absolutely must be said plug, thank you very much for the broadband money that will go so far in our region. Um, but with electric vehicles, as we keep seeing more and more tourism in our outdoor recreation spaces, the ability to have that tourism become more sustainable, to have more of our visitors be able to land with places where there's infrastructure to charge those cars helps us build that into a more resilient and sustainable system, which is so important because it's all based in the natural resources we have. And then the last piece I'll say is towards climate change. There is a wonderful tie to economic development. We have been working to tease out here in what would happen if we met our climate responsibilities in the future? What would happen if the jobs around electric vehicles, maintenance change in our region for those who are employed in the heavy diesel mechanic fields now, right? And what would it be to rise to that challenge with green infrastructure and the jobs and the workforce tooled up and ready to do it. And I think this is a great ability for us to show investment in it along with planning to get to the place where our workforce is there to rise to this challenge when we see it come. So thank you all very much.
Great. Thank you. And with that, I'll turn it over to Congressman Pappas and Congressman Custer and Q and A. Any, uh, conversations that folks want to have?
Great. Thanks, Nick. Um, any, this is really, really helpful. Uh, it, it, we appreciate the enthusiasm. We've had so many meetings with you, to every one of you over the last several years. And, um, you know, we knew Chris has been working, I think, on the infrastructure bill and his transportation and infrastructure committee for, since he first came to Congress, and I'm now serving on the energy and commerce and working on the climate provisions and the uh, clean energy provisions and also over on the agriculture committee. Um, so it's just so wonderful. You know, we had to stay up till midnight Friday night to get it done. It wasn't pretty. Watching it get over the line, but it's because it's so big, frankly, it's so uh, impact so many parts of people's lives all across this country. And finally, finally to have the funding that we need. Um, Commissioner Sheehan this morning was so excited about the tenure plan. They're right at that planning stage where they're putting that together again. And you could just see the enthusiasm in her eyes about, wow, we'll actually be able to get these projects done. You know, this, um, you talked about the one-on-one corridor, you talked about, um, doing the rail, you know, there are just so many things that are really going to help people. Uh, move around and get goods to market, get employees to work, get families together, um, without spending hours stuck in traffic. So, and then in the North Country, North Country, Kayla, thank you so much. It's just really, really important in the Lakes region. Uh, whether it's over Dartmouth, Sonopee or over in Belknap County or Bristol. Um, you know, there is tremendous quality of life and you could see it with the people coming and staying in their second homes and saying, oh my God, what a beautiful place to live. We, you know, they come for 10 weeks, 12 weeks, whether it's summer or winter, but they don't stay for the shoulder season and realize what we have. But they have needs too, you know, broadband and, um, uh, but when we get this all sorted out, there'll be a great tax base as well for us, for our local education, for improving the quality of opportunity for our, our, our families who, who live here year round. So there's just, I feel like we're in this in-between stage. We've got a lot of changes. We call it build back better. And I think we're really, really excited about it. So I'll, I'll hand it off to Chris and then we'll see if there are any questions left.
No, well, well, thank you. And thank you all for sharing your perspective. It is really helpful to hear it. And I know there's more information and more detail that needs to get out about the legislation, but I hope our offices can continue to work with you all on that, um, as, uh, as we work to sort of understand how we can capture, uh, these resources as best as possible, put them to work for the people of New Hampshire. Uh, I just like respond to a couple of things that came up. Nate raised the issue of the, uh, toll credit marketplace, which is legislation that we've been pushing in the House. We're really happy to see it included. Uh, we know that New Hampshire has several hundred million dollars worth of toll credits that, uh, it generates, um, on its turnpike system that, uh, potentially we can trade now, uh, with other states to utilize those dollars, uh, for federal highway projects. So that would allow us to leverage, uh, some additional resources. It's a force multiplier for New Hampshire. And um, I think that could really be beneficial for us. So I know the department's going to be, uh, exploring that. Um, and I think there's more work to do from the Federal Department of Transportation's perspective in terms of how this will be structured and how it will all work. Um, you know, alternatives I, I think are quite exciting here. Uh, we've been advocating for a new dedicated program, uh, connecting America's active transportation, uh, systems, uh, that was included, uh, and authorized in the bill. And, um, you know, it's got some great support, uh, for local and regional connections. We all know rail trails, bike ped. Uh, the programs as they're set up today just, uh, aren't meeting the need that's out there. Um, we are going to have to do some additional work in fighting for the appropriations for that particular piece that we hope we can accomplish in, in the end of year bill. And we should remind folks that there are also other opportunities to, um, you know, make some progress on infrastructure. Um, we have this build back better bill that we are working on currently where there's some additional support for EV and for transit in the bill. Um, we know that transit was even cut back from, uh, where we wanted it to be as part of the bipartisan bill will be able to potentially restore some dollars through the build back better bill. And then the housing piece i- is just something that is a must. Uh, we're going to see significant support, uh, expansion of existing programs and tax credits through the build back better legislation. Um, obviously we need local cooperation to, to bring that kind of development about, but, um, you know, we will see a, a significant federal expansion in those resources. Uh, that is, uh, something that's a must for our state as we seek to build the workforce. We need, uh, not only to create the infrastructure projects, but to, um, allow our economy to grow and thrive. And you all are, are well aware of that. So, um, certainly more work to do. I'm glad that, um, we can put the infrastructure week jokes to rest and now get serious about, uh, how we implement this bill and, uh, you know, your, your guidance and feedback is going to continue to be important for us. Uh, as we move forward. So, um, we, uh, we thank you for that. Uh, and I'll say this, I, I think that, you know, this comes at a good time and the commissioner said this earlier today. Um, where we are in the tenure process, um, where the council has done the public hearings, but still has an ability to, um, you know, uh, consider modifications. And so I think they'll be working with the department on that. I, I would urge you all to, um, as a former counselor, uh, to be communicative of, um, maybe where the state can, uh, take additional steps in the right direction based on what you know is important to your region. So thanks, everyone. It's great to see you all.
Nick, you have any questions in the queue? I think that probably about wraps it up.
I don't believe there's any, uh, any questions from the press at this point. Um, but I'll open up if anyone else has any, wants any final words, but otherwise thank you all so much for joining. Nate, you want to hop in there?
I, I just, um, one, one thing I would, I would note, um, and ask for, um, both Congressman Pappas and Congresswoman Custer and your staffs to keep an eye on. Now that the bill is going to be headed towards implementation, a lot of the programs and new funding that are in this bill, the new funding isn't going to necessarily always be distributed by formula. Large portions of the funding are going to be distributed on a discretionary basis by US DOT. Um, I would encourage, I, I see Stevens on the call. I know he, he, he has his finger to the pulse of, of a lot of this. As this bill starts moving into the rulemaking phase, I think we need to, you know, continue to make sure that, uh, that those discretionary programs are, are decided and awarded as transparently as possible. And that the needs of a small state like New Hampshire with a small federal delegation, uh, gets its fair share of that discretionary funding and that, that our state's needs are considered on par with other larger states, you know, like you, the Californias, the Texas's, the Illinois's, the New York's, the Pennsylvanias. Uh, you know, it's, it's a difficult position sometimes for US DOT staff to be making those types of, of decisions. And I think whatever we can do to advocate for transparency and to ensure that the needs of a small state like New Hampshire are, are evaluated fairly in those discretionary programs is going to be really important to how New Hampshire ultimately fares with some of these new programs in the bill. So I would just note that and, and ask for your continued support on, on that issue.
Yeah, I absolutely agree. And, and two things come to mind. Um, one is that the rural broadband is a really great example of how our delegation can work together and work effectively with other small state delegations to get a floor, that hundred million that's coming to New Hampshire is a floor. Because we knew that small states would have to really, you know, fight for that funding. And, and this is not the first time we've done it. We, we had a similar thing with opioid funding. Where we go in and, and, you know, because of the seniority and the role that Jeanne Chahin plays in the Senate and Maggie Haas and Chris and myself and the relationships that we have. We can work with other rural states and really organize rural communities and be effective in a rural caucus, if you will. Um, so that's number one. Number two, I can't help but say, um, trust me, Pete Buttigieg drove a lot of miles in New Hampshire and, you know, to have him as our Secretary of Transportation right now. And I stay in very close touch with him. And, you know, he was there on the potholes and the roads, the bridges and the highways. And, and the broadband and the telephone, you know, can you hear me now? Can you hear me now? I mean, I was literally in the car with him. I was just trying to do these interviews with media in between stops. And I think, um, you know, look, he, he already knew it from the Midwest, but he didn't have the situation we have that, that, uh, I think Susan mentioned about the geography and that, you know, the hills and the dales and the, the, um, steep slopes here, there and everywhere. And so I, I think he, um, really got a good sense of it. And we won't hesitate to pick up the phone or write a letter or pull together. Um, you know, Chris met all these folks. I did, uh, June and Maggie did. And, um, uh, it's really important. Those relationships are relationships to this White House with Kamala Harris and, and Joe Biden. Our relationships at DOT are very, very strong. And so, you know, I'm not trying to be partisan in any way. I'm trying to be very practical here. Um, there's a reason that people keep coming back to New Hampshire and we keep building out. Uh, we like to say we, um, you know, we punch above our weight here, above our class. So. Well, great. Thank you, everybody. I think Chris maybe had to hop off right at the 2:30 mark. So I'm going to let you all go. Um, it's just so great to see you. Thank you for your hard work in the trenches. These past 20 months have been the most challenging of our, our careers and indeed our lifetime. But, um, you know, with the, with the, um, the vaccine and, and people getting back to work now triple vaxxed with the, with the, um, booster. People's lives, the kids are going to get vaccinated now. Keep people's lives are really starting to get back on track and um, all that work that you've been doing quite literally in the trenches, Dean, I love your picture. Um, is, uh, is really going to make a difference in people's lives and, and we appreciate that. Thanks for all that you do. Thanks, Nick, for helping us out. Take care, everyone. Bye-bye.